It looks like it's seven now. I'm going to unmute or ask the board members to unmute so that you can take role.
Okay.
Okay, it looks like you can go ahead and do that.
You want me to take role?
Yeah, you can go ahead and start the meeting with the agenda.
Okay, I will call Supervisor Palmblad.
Here.
Trustee Boss. Trustee Bowman. Trustee Jennings.
Here.
Trustee Sights.
Here.
E.L.A. Township Manager.
Present.
Carrie Lynn.
I'm here. Now, we have two unidentified participants by phone, and I'm wondering if either of them is are one of the missing trustees.
It could be Boss or Bowman, yeah.
Their names aren't listed, so... Does anyone recognize those numbers as being theirs?
Bear with us a minute.
Okay.
We're having technical problems here.
Alright, I think that's better. So the two phone numbers that they were trying to identify are here. Eight four seven. Seven seven zero eight one one three. Fitz, Larry, or Chris?
What are you looking at?
Trustee Bowman, Trustee Boss.
I got nine six two four nine eight six? No.
No. Nope.
Okay, well, we do have a majority of the quorum. Because we have three elected numbers of the township board.
Alright.
So, we can proceed, and if they join us, then we'll just let them in as they join us, okay?
Sounds good.
Okay.
Okay, then we're gonna do the Pledge of Allegiance next. That's okay?
Okay.
Alright. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
To the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic.
Go to the stands.
Okay, next, we'll have an informational presentation on the E.L.A. Township Road District referendum for November 3rd, 2020, provided by Ann Selgling and Carrie Lynn. Okay, Carrie Lynn, let me turn over to you.
Great. Thank you, and if anyone notices anyone trying to enter the meeting, please let me know because my screen has kind of taken up most of this, and I lost the section which had the public. I might get like the doorbell sound or something, but if you see anyone trying to enter the meeting, I want to make sure that everybody enters who would like to participate, so please, somebody, just let me know. Okay, so, today, we're going to hold a meeting on the proposed referendum to eliminate the road district. And we have several discussion items that we're going to cover, and then we're going to open it up for questions and answers. And then we're also going to do a public comment. So what we're going to address this evening is, first of all, what's the motivation behind the referendum? What does the referendum mean for me as the taxpayer of E.L.A. Township? What are some frequently asked questions? We will then have a question and answer period. Right now, I have the chatroom closed, but during the question and answer period, I will open the chatroom if people would like to post questions instead of asking them. Otherwise, if you raise your hand, I'll recognize you, and you can ask questions. And we're not going to entertain just random comments in the public chat unless people want to chat in that forum instead of participating in public comment, and I'll explain that more as we get towards that section. So first of all, what are the motivations of the township in actually going forth with this? First of all, the taxpayers would eliminate a taxing body, but they would continue to receive the same services. Right now, there's a clamor in Springfield to eliminate units of local government. Several road districts in Lake County are actually transitioning to being run by their townships with this next election cycle, either because they've passed a referendum, or because they are now under the amount of roads. So there's a lot of road districts having the shift right now. Second, there'll be greater accountability and transparency, because all spending decisions would have to be made in an open, public meeting. For example, right now, the way that road districts are structured are that any road projects really are just at the discretion of the Highway Commissioner, and if the Highway Commissioner establishes a priority of one street instead of another, he can simply do that, and it doesn't have to really be approved by anybody. And so this just would require decisions like that to actually be made by the board, and so there would be more public discourse about road projects. And in addition, there could be potential cost savings with increased efficiencies and shared vendors, and while the township has not yet fully examined all of those, those are some of the things, and we'll discuss that a little more in a moment. So what's the impact of the referendum if it passes? Well, first of all, the road district services will remain the same. Basically, those services will just be absorbed into the township, and the township would operate the road district very similarly to how a village runs a public works department. So, just like a village would have a public works department that works on all the road projects, and road repairs, and storm cleanup, and stuff like that, that's how it would operate in the event that it's taken over. So instead of a separate taxing body performing road services, there would be actually a department of the township that would be running those services. What happens to the employees? Basically, the road district employees would become township employees. Unless, of course, they want to quit and find employment elsewhere. No one, I mean, people can quit working for the road district now if they want to, so they would still be at will employees, just as they are now, but it would be the township that they're employed by. Residents would see no difference in services, because they're getting the same services performed by the same group of people. But the road district would no longer be a taxing entity. Now, to clarify, taxes would still be levied for the road district, but not through the road district. For the road services, they would be levied through the township. There'd be one less taxing line and taxing body on your tax bill. So, in addition, with another impact of the referendum would be that the position of the elected highway commissioner would be eliminated and replaced by a highway superintendent who would be a township employee, who would report to the township manager, just like a public works superintendent would report to a village manager. And because the highway commissioner would be an employee and not an elected official, there would be continuity so that that position wouldn't be subject to changes anytime that there is an election. Because right now, every four years, the public has the ability to change highway commissioners depending on how they vote. So how would consolidation increase efficiencies? First of all, it would eliminate certain repair costs that the township is getting right now invoiced by the road district. So currently, if the road district is performing repairs for the township, the road district is paying employees to perform those services and then invoicing the township for labor and parts. So the township is paying, on one hand, through their taxes to the road district, and taxpayers are also paying, again, because the township's being invoiced by the road district. So this would eliminate any invoices. The township's not going to invoice itself for that. And actually, it's kind of unusual that the road district's actually invoicing the township, because most road districts just provide services for their townships, because highway commissioners are township officials. But the taxpayers right now are paying for those, and that's one way that efficiencies would be recognized. How would consolidation increase accountability and transparency? Currently, as I briefly mentioned earlier, the highway commissioner makes all the decisions about road projects and services, and the township board cannot direct or prioritize which road work projects are more important, or which ones can be afforded during a certain year. And they can't really direct the manner in which the work is provided. So this would ensure that matters would have to be discussed by the township board and handled like a public works department, and bids have to be opened at public meetings of the township board and things like that. Right now, the highway commissioner is not accountable to any other elected official or public body, although certainly the highway commissioner is accountable to the taxing body. And just a side note, this referendum is not targeted to eliminate this highway commissioner. There haven't necessarily been any complaints about this highway commissioner, so it's not a matter of the person holding the office of highway commissioner. But it's a matter, under Illinois law, all highway commissioners in the state are not accountable to road districts unless the road district has been absorbed into the township. So it's just a greater system, really, of checks and balances. In addition, the road department would be structured like a public works department, and so there would be accountability, because it would be under the structure of the township board. So what are the benefits of accountability and transparency? Well, first of all, and this thankfully has not been the situation in E.L.A. Township, but there have been several road districts in the state where the highway commissioners have engaged in potentially fraudulent undertakings, and part of that is because of the lack of oversight and accountability. And two days ago, the Daily Herald ran an article about potential fraud with the Bloomingdale Township Road District. Other road districts have also been plagued by allegations of fraud. And like corruption or mismanagement, such as Dundee Township and Algonquin Township, their highway commissioners. And as I said, those have not been a problem in E.L.A. Township. E.L.A. Township has a history of very incredibly competent highway commissioners, some of whom have been cited as being some of the most outstanding highway commissioners in the state, given some of the intergovernmental cooperation. But this is something to protect that kind of situation in the future. And it also would have oversight, accountability, and transparency, which would lessen the opportunity for wrongdoing and mismanagement, because there would be a system of checks and balances. What other benefits are there to consolidation? Well, part of the problem is that when townships and road districts have township officials and road district officials fighting over powers, it keeps people like me in business, because there end up being lawsuits about who has the power to do what, and who doesn't have the power to do what, and taxpayers end up footing the bill on both sides of that equation for both sets of lawyers. So that is a terrible thing to everybody except for the lawyers involved, and taxpayers really don't like when that happens. So double legal fees for two different sets of lawyers can be eliminated if a highway department is run by the township. Now, one of the questions is, how does the road district benefit me if I live in a municipality that maintains a public works department? Because a lot of E.L.A. Township is within incorporated municipalities. Well, if you live in a municipality with the public works department, the road district and the municipality might be collaborating through an intergovernmental agreement to provide services and share equipment. So that's one thing, but if there is no agreement, then the public works department in your municipality provides your road services. And right now, if there are intergovernmental agreements, those would continue. It would just be shifted from an intergovernmental agreement between the road district and a municipality to the township and municipality. What tax savings or cost savings will result? Well, first of all, the township has not fully evaluated all of this. This is something that they're going to continue to do as we move forward. Certainly, the hope would be that if we're eliminating a unit of local government, there will be some cost savings involved, but this is something that the township board is taking seriously, and they are going to look to see what kind of efficiencies could result from this. A few that we've identified right now is that these double legal fees would be eliminated. The township would no longer be charged by the road district for road district services. That would just be one taxing body paying for the services instead of like a double taxation for the same services. And the township board is going to continue to look in other ways that perhaps potential elimination of maybe double vendors, streamlining processes, and other things like that, how those cost savings or tax savings will result. One of the questions that we've been getting is, aren't you doing this because the supervisor really wants to control the road district dollars? No. All revenues from property taxes and intergovernmental agreements that are generated either by the road district or under these road funds when they're taken over by the township are earmarked only for road district funds. They can't be used for anything other than road district projects. But this would provide a system of checks and balances that does not currently exist. And the highway superintendent would report to the township manager, who would report to the township board, not to the township supervisor, so this does not somehow change the township supervisor into a little dictator over road projects. It actually opens it up to be a more collaborative process, because now the township board would be directing the highway superintendent, who would be accountable to five people, not one. How will our road services change if this referendum passes? They will not change. The services are going to be the same services provided by the same people with the same equipment in the same manner, so that really wouldn't change. However, the services are not going to be supervised by a politician, which is the way that the township code sets this system up, or in the highway code. Instead, they'll be supervised by a superintendent who's accountable to a board, just like they are under a village board system or county board system. What happens if the highway commissioner fires all the employees if the referendum passes? Well, if the highway commissioner, and we don't have any reason to expect this will happen, but it was a question we did receive, if the highway commissioner terminates employees in retaliation for the support of the referendum, then he could be subject to a civil rights lawsuit for political retaliation. And those are not like protected activities, so there could be personal liability to the highway commissioner. Again, we have no reason to expect that that would happen. We believe all road district employees are secure in their appointment, employment after the election, no matter what happens with the referendum. Did the township board follow the right procedures to put this question on the ballot? So there was some concern that the township just kind of discussed this at the last minute and railroaded it through on the agenda. And there were some comments made at a public meeting that basically, well, we've discussed this before, let's get going on it, and it made it sound like there were secret meetings going on. There weren't. First of all, there were some meetings prior to the time that the township board voted on the referendum. It wasn't a township board meeting, I think a committee of the whole meeting where the township board did discuss this in conjunction with discussions on the highway commissioner's salary. In addition, the supervisor did speak individually with township board members about this, so there were discussions about it, but the open meetings act doesn't prohibit individual discussions about township board members. It prohibits three people from talking, and there have not been three members of the township board that have discussed this outside of an open meeting. But the township board did, they were required to adopt a resolution at an open meeting to put the question on the ballot, and they did that at their meeting on August 13th. Does the township have a plan for how this will all work? Yes, they do. As I've already repeated, the leadership of the road district will transfer to a department head position within the township. And unlike the highway commissioner position, the department head will be subject to oversight and accountability by the township board. Road district employees will become township employees. If the current highway commissioner is doing a good job, why do we need this referendum? Well, you know, that's really a great question, and as I reiterated before, there's no allegation that the highway commissioner is not doing a good job. We understand always, with public officials, no matter what office you hold, there are going to be complaints from members of the public, so sometimes that happens. But this is not any kind of attempt to crucify the current highway commissioner. The change is merely to facilitate good government with oversight, transparency, and accountability before any problem develops. If the highway commissioner wants to apply for the position of highway superintendent, welcome to do that. The highway department leadership would not be subject to the political process. It's actually kind of weird when you think about it. Why would roads in a township be subject to being elected when they really aren't in any other form of government? It would be interesting kind of to research the history of why the General Assembly thought that would be a good idea, because it shouldn't be a political issue, like, well, road is getting fixed. But anyway, sometimes what happens during the election cycle is that like employees of road districts get worried, well, what if it changes over? What's going to happen to our jobs? What's going to happen with the existing road projects? What's going to happen with this? This eliminates that, and we don't have these problems in the county. We don't have these problems with any villages, and I'm not even saying we have these problems here, but it does provide for continuity. It's not subject to a political process. So that is that. How many miles of road does the road district serve? Well, right now, the road district currently serves up to 23.5 miles of unincorporated E.L.A. Township roads. Now, those have the potential to be reduced if municipalities annex property, because then the roads get annexed, and that's how some of these Lake County townships that I talked about, they're taking over their road districts, because they're now under 15 miles, because their municipalities have taken those over. So the road district also, though, provides varying public work services and road services to municipalities in E.L.A. Township through intergovernmental agreements, and if this referendum passes, the existing intergovernmental agreements would continue. Okay, questions and answers. What we're going to do, we have two different things we're going to do here. First, we're going to take questions and answers, and we're happy to answer any questions that you have. We'll take the questions first. If you can, like, raise your hand on the screen, I'll recognize you, and anyone who wants to ask a question will be permitted to do that, if it really is a question seeking information about the referendum and not like a question designed to taunt the public officials or something like that. In the alternative, if you don't want to raise your hand, if you want to send a post privately to me in the chatroom, I'll open up the chatroom so that you can ask questions. No, either, let me try to do that here. Well, I had to stop my screen sharing, so let me just go through this. Let me continue first. Each person is going to be recognized once for questions, and then we're going to take all the questions that that person has at that time. And once those questions are answered, I'm going to mute that person asking the questions, and I'm going to go to the next person, and we're not going to have the first person be able to ask questions again, although certainly, you're entitled to make whatever comments you want to in public comment. Then, I'll answer the questions during the questions and answers, or board members might do that. The board member is not going to answer questions that aren't really legitimate questions. And then after questions and answers, the board is going to entertain public comment. Now, during public comment, because that's going to follow the question and answer period, we're not going to entertain questions during public comment, but if people want to make a comment, you have the right to do that. And anyone who wishes to address the board will be given the opportunity to speak, subject to the fact that the board has three minutes per person as a limit. That was a prior established rule way back when Lucy was the supervisor. We adopted those public comment rules. And anyone who's commenting, obviously, it can't be disrespectful or abusive or profane, or we're going to cut off those comments. So with that, I'm going to stop my screen sharing. I'm going to enable the chatroom, and also, if people want to go ahead and raise their hands, or somehow let me know that you have a public question, then I'm going to unmute the board member so they can also answer. Or if you want to post in the chatroom if you're calling in on your phone, if you want to do that. Does anybody have any questions about this? And I'll give everybody like a minute or two here to let me know, because sometimes it's hard to like navigate that little hand thing. If you can't find the little hand, gesture under reactions or whatever, then you can just like wave your hand if I can see you, and I will recognize you, or if you want to post something in the chatroom to get my attention, then I'm happy to do that. I am not seeing anyone with questions. Is there anybody? Has anybody seen anyone with questions or raising their hands here?
We only have like five people listed here, so I don't know.
Okay, wait, yes, we do have one, Mrs. Kruckenberg, and I'm going to unmute her. Oops, did I just unmute you? There you go. Alright, I put ask to unmute, so you should be able to unmute yourself now, Mrs. Kruckenberg.
Okay.
Okay.
Is it not true, though, that we will, the road district will then not have any funds for the motor fuel tax? The funds for motor fuel tax will be null and void, because there is no road? Is that not correct?
I have not heard that. Are you saying that?
That's what the county was saying, that there would be no more motor fuel tax levied to the township, which is approximately $25,000. It goes up and down, and next year, it's certainly going to go down, because nobody's driving.
So I don't know the answer to that question. So what I am going to do is research that and find out. I have not heard that, and I haven't read that in the consolidation statute. Do you have someone at the county you were talking to?
No, no.
Okay, I will check on that, and then I can let you know the answer, and I will also make sure that at the next regular township board meeting, that the township will answer that question in an open format.
Okay.
I just, I haven't seen any part of the legislation that says that that would disappear. So... Alright. Did you have any other questions? No, okay, alright. I'm sorry, I just don't know the answer to that one. Alright, is there anybody else that has a question or would like to be recognized? I am not seeing any other questions. I'm not seeing anyone else in the chatroom. So I think what I would like to do then, unless anyone objects, is move to public comment. Does anybody have a public comment they would like to address to the board? I have to say, I think this has probably been the most tranquil public meeting that I've been to in the past year, which is good. So I don't see anybody seeking to public comment. I'm not seeing anything in the chatroom. So if there's not public comment, unless there are any statements that the board would like to make, or any of the board members, then I think we could, Lucy, we could entertain a motion to adjourn if somebody wants to make a motion to adjourn. Except I might have muted everybody, so let me see here, something weird is going to...
Carrie Lynn, can you hear us?
I can.
So just to let you know, as well, we haven't received any questions via email either.
Okay. Okay, well, then, it would be appropriate for the board to make a motion to adjourn, have that seconded, and have a vote on that. And by the way, this meeting was recorded in accordance with, first of all, Governor Pritzker's order that any meetings being held electronically are recorded, that the public recording will be available, and the township board wanted to record this anyway, just so that if people have questions and we're not able to attend tonight, this will be out there for them to listen to.
Okay, so thank you, everyone, for attending tonight.
Thank you.
Thanks, Carrie Lynn, for being here, and if I have no other public comments, can I have a motion to adjourn? Thanks, Carolyn, for being here, and if I have no other public comments, can I have a motion to adjourn?
Trustee Sykes will motion.
Trustee Sykes motions.
Second, who's seconding? I need a second.
Michael?
I might have to unmute Mr. Jennings.
I, um, I'll second, so...
Okay, I have trustee Sykes making a motion to adjourn, and trustee Jennings seconding, right?
Correct.
Okay, got it.
You need a roll call vote.
Okay. Supervisor, come on in.
Yes.
Trustee Jennings? Trustee Jennings?
He's muted.
He's muted.
Alright, sorry.
Unmuting now. Is this just to, is this just to vote on stopping the meeting, right?
Yes, yes. Trustee Jennings?
Yes.
Trustee Sykes?
Yes.
Trustee Boss? Absent. Trustee Bowman? Absent. Motion carries. The meeting will adjourn.
Thank you, goodnight, everybody.
Goodnight, everybody.
Thank you all.
Seven twenty-six.